Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this August 1st meeting of the Common Council to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Yenser.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please stay standing. We're going to do a moment of silence this month, and I'd like for you during the moment of silence to think of the string of victims from the senseless crimes that have taken place throughout our community. It's heartbreaking when we read the news the past month, and I'd like to keep them in our thoughts. We have no citizen recognition this month, although next month will be Councilwoman Selvi. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ingram?
In attendance.
Mr. Garrett?
Here.
Mr. Overby?
Present.
Mr. Dishman?
Present.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Polk?
Present.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Selvi?
Here.
President Robinson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. Now unless there are any corrections that need to be made with the minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July 11. Motion was made by Councilman Green. Seconded by Councilman Ingram. Roll call, please.
Made by Ingram, seconded by Ingram?
Made by Green, seconded by Ingram. Sorry.
Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
President Robinson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
How many reports do we have, any?
Um, I guess I'll go ahead and go. So we did meet on July 27th for the redistricting committee meeting. It was, um, we had discussion as far as trying to, and I think every one of us had tried to work the numbers to see what we could come up with on our own. And we could not do that without really making it worse, honestly. So I think, well, what we voted on was to go ahead and search or seek out some quotes to have an outside firm look at doing that. If it's too expensive or it's too, it would put us past the December deadline, then kind of come back as a group and make a decision at that time. So we're, I'm seeking out some quotes. I had one that did not want to get involved in it from the local GIS. Kyle Johnson didn't, he could provide us information but didn't want to do anything else with it. So at this time, I'm in the process of getting a couple of quotes, and then I will present those to the rest of the committee and see if we want to move forward on that.
Thank you, Councilman Polk. Are there any other committee reports this evening?
Do you want me to do something basically to do with the Transportation Policy Committee meeting?
Yeah, by all means.
So not too long ago, this is to do with the Transportation Policy Committee meeting, at one of the meetings, NDOT had suggested the closure of Rigan Road and the Muncie Bypass. Me and several other members opposed to that. We decided that we needed to have a public meeting. We had that public meeting, and I felt like the citizens' voices were very loud and clear that we do not want this intersection closed. So working with Dan Gibson, we got a letter together of opposition. I'd like to read that real quick. Dear Ms. Taylor Hendricks, the undersigned members of the common city, or the Common Council of the City of Muncie, Indiana, write in opposition to the proposed project at Rigan Road and County Road 300 North and US 35 in Muncie, Indiana. It is our understanding that the Indiana Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration propose to eliminate the left turn lanes on US 35 from Rigan Road to County Road 300 North and close the center median of US 35. While this intersection lies just beyond the border of Muncie, the intersection is an important transportation route for the residents of the City of Muncie and emergency response personnel. We believe that the proposed actions may increase the response time of emergency personnel. In addition, the proposed actions will likely increase traffic and the number of left turns on State Road 67 at County Road 350 North, which may lead to increased traffic accidents at that intersection. Simply put, we believe the proposed actions are not in the best interest of the residents of the City of Muncie. As such, the undersigned council members of the Common Council of the City of Muncie join the Delaware County Council, Delaware County Sheriff Tony Skinner, and numerous other local officials opposing this proposal. And I do have every council member's signature on this. I'm going to get the mayor, if he's willing, and the clerk as well.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram. Councilman Polk?
Okay, so at our committee meeting, I forgot to mention this, I was made fun of for my calendar like this. So I want to present you your own personal calendar.
Is this for me? And look, it's got a redheaded boy on the front.
It does have a redheaded boy on the front.
Thank you very much, Councilman Polk.
So use it wisely.
We can check the fishing forecast.
We'll ask on that a little later.
That's cool.
Thank you very much, Councilman Polk. We have no boards, no, excuse me, no appointments to boards and commissions this month, so
we'll roll right into ordinances previously introduced.
Ordinance 23-22, an ordinance for additional appropriations, Muncie Fire Department EMS.
Sir, a motion for approval of ordinance 23-22? So moved. All right, slow down, guys. I've got Councilman Green with the motion, and I've got Councilman Polk with the second. Anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 23-22? We covered this extensively last month. Seeing anyone from the audience? Good evening, Mr. Barber.
This is for the Audi Barber, 610 West 11th. This is for the police vehicle.
This is for the fire department, for the fire vehicles, as well as some radios.
And they are, I'd like to go on the record in saying that they are using EMS money for these purchases, correct?
I believe that is correct.
Good. So EMS is making money, then?
Yes, sir. I believe that is the case.
All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 23-22? Anything from the council? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
President Robinson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Ordinance 24-22?
Ordinance 24-22, an ordinance for additional appropriations, Muncie Police Department.
We have a motion for approval of ordinance 24-22. So moved. Motion was made by Councilman Polk, seconded by Councilman Overby. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 24-22? Again, this was something we discussed extensively last month. Anything from the audience, Mr. Barber?
Audi Barber again. I would like to say thanks to the Muncie Police Department for the hard work they have put in on a triple homicide not too long ago and the, um, all of a sudden, the overwhelming crime in the City of Muncie. I know they're working tirelessly on it, and sometimes they don't get the right thanks, but I'd like to say thank you to them for working their butts off and doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Councilwoman Selvi.
Okay, and I also want to add, yes, I want to say thank you, and it's amazing the response and the effortless and the tireless work of the detectives and the police force for catching the people who committed those crimes. That takes a lot of work, and it's just a message, I think, for people to know that if you commit a crime in Muncie, they will come and find you. You will be caught. Enough is enough.
Thank you, Councilwoman Selvi. Is there anyone here, anyone else here wishing to speak on ordinance 24-22? Deputy Chief Deegan, how are you this evening?
Good. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Mr. Barber, thank you. Councilperson Selvi, thank you. It's been a challenging couple of weeks for the police department, for the community. I appreciate the moment of silence at the start of this meeting to recognize those victims that are suffering right now, and I assure you that the police department has dedicated every available resource we have to the happenings of the last couple of weeks, and will continue to do that. This does not sit well with us. I know it doesn't sit well with you or the community, but we are not going to tolerate senseless acts of violence, and we will do everything that we can to make sure that we keep this community safe. That I can assure you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Deegan.
Thanks.
Much appreciated. If there's nothing further on ordinance 24-22, roll call, please.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
President Robinson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Ordinance 25-22?
Ordinance 25-22, Common Council of the City of Muncie, Indiana, designation of economic development target area, White River Plaza area.
Sir, a motion for approval of ordinance 25-22? So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Ingram, seconded by Councilwoman Selvi. Anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 25-22? Is there anything from the council on ordinance 25-22?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'm going to go ahead and request so Mr. Mick is not, when we have an ordinance committee meeting, a subcommittee, to bring any quotes that he has. So if he is going to fix the roof, he's going to redo the parking lot, I would like to see some numbers before that meeting. So I just want to make it public, at least one quote per project.
Understood. Is there anything else from the council regarding ordinance 25-22? Anything from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
President Robinson?
Affirmative.
Nine yeses.
How you like that one, Troy?
That is it for ordinances previously introduced.
We'll move into new ordinances with ordinance 26-22.
Ordinance?
So I've been asked by Beach Grove to withdraw this due to the fact that they are redoing some of their inside rules and stuff, so they would rewrite it, some things that are changing, and then bring this back to council.
Yeah, and I would anticipate that to happen next month, and I do want to take the opportunity while we're speaking about Beach Grove. You know, we as a council have, over the course of the last nine months, done a lot and made a lot of changes at Beach Grove Cemetery. We began with adding a new board member first, and we expanded the board from five to seven members and brought in a couple of new, replaced a couple of others, their terms had rolled off. They've just recently hired a new superintendent at Beach Grove, and I'm going to put Troy on the spot a little bit. Troy Waters, if you would, come up to the, come up here and introduce yourself. But I want to, more than anything, I want to point out just how great, he's been on the job since a little after the Fourth of July, and in that short a period of time, I went through the cemetery the other day just to look, and has already a noticeable difference with Mr. Waters at the helm there. So Troy, I'll let you introduce yourself to the council.
Troy Waters, new superintendent of Beach Grove, and I appreciate the chance, opportunity to work here. I've always had a thing for Beach Grove and been really good. We're just trying to get things done. We've had a lot of comments from the community, the city administration, and I really appreciate I don't want to take credit myself because we get, I just got the-
You take credit yourself because I'm going to give credit to the board in a second.
We've got in there and the guys that got out working, and every day they're out, you know.
It's a, it's a real point of pride for this community, Beach Grove Cemetery. It's a historic cemetery where all of, not all of, some of, majority of the most important figures in Muncie's history are interred at that cemetery. So I appreciate the work that you're putting in and bringing that back to prominence. And the Board of Directors, or excuse me, the Board of Trustees that this council has appointed have been absolutely amazing. I mean, they are really, really doing some great things at Beach Grove, you know, at the direction of Sally Jo Vasico, who is the Board of Trustees President there, and our collective hats off to you and to that board for doing such an outstanding job. We look forward to what the future is going to bring.
Thank you. Also, want to add, we're getting the chapel, hopefully have it open, but September the 10th, I'm planning on having a open house for the community so they can come in and actually see it, see what's going on and see the improvements, and a lot of people come in and they've never been in there before, you know?
Oh, yeah.
But I want to give the community the opportunity to come in and see what's going on and what it's all about.
When we have our August City Council meeting, when we bring this ordinance back, make sure you remind us and the community of that on September 10th. We look forward to seeing it. It really is a beautiful, beautiful facility.
All right. Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you, Troy. So ordinance 26-22 has been withdrawn, and we have no resolutions, so we're going to move right into other business. But first, I have, at the request of council, invited Eldon Solomon from The Journey Home here this evening to speak and tell us a little bit about helping homeless veterans.
Thank you. My name is Eldon Solomon. I am the CEO and Director of The Journey Home. I have information to leave with each one of you this evening, so you can walk away and keep hearing my voices as you, as you leave the room today. The Journey Home is a veteran outreach organization. Most of you, some of you might know us as a transitional facility. We offer outreach services to veterans that are at risk locally, regionally, and also on a national level. We have four strategies that we, that we work with. One of them is our transitional facility. We work closely with the VA out of Northern Indiana Healthcare System, Dayton and Indianapolis to find veterans that are homeless throughout the country and get them into permanent housing. Councilman Selvi asked me how many veterans we have helped in the last three to five years from the Muncie area, not Delaware County, but Muncie area, and our number shows that we have helped 61 veterans either at risk or homeless from Muncie, either obtain housing here or retain their housing here in this area. This is a very important issue for all of us to think about. There are 1,400,000 veterans in this country that the VA and federal government estimates that are at risk of becoming homeless. 1,400,000. There are 37,000-plus veterans that we have counted in this country that are actually homeless. When you put those two numbers together, 1,437,000, that makes up a one out of 10 veterans in this country that are either at risk or homeless. It tells a huge story. Veterans are in trouble. There's a lot of reasons behind that, and let me, let me tell you the difference between the at-risk and the homeless. The at-risk only are, have the same fat indicators in terms of mental illness, disabilities, substance abuse, PTSD. The only difference between them and those that are homeless is that they're not homeless yet. And so the reason why we're an outreach organization is that we are looking constantly in this community, the communities around us and throughout the country, to find those veterans that happen for whatever reason that are in trouble, that just haven't been, that aren't homeless yet, and keep them housed. This is an expensive mission. All of our outreach services from crisis and disaster relief, the education, we speak to the community, and our housing retention programs are all funded by philanthropic giving, whether it be from individual donors to corporations to even city councilmen. We've made trips to other city councilmen, asking them to help us fund this mission, and part of the reasons why I'm here is not only to educate you on what those needs are, that there are veterans in this community that are struggling, and we don't know who they are, where they're at, and they need your help. And so part of this conversation today is to ask for help. Would you help fund this mission as we, as we move, as we move forward? I'm open for questions. I said it, she said I had five minutes, which is hard. I can take longer than that. I'll ask any questions you wish.
Councilman Ingram?
So first off, as a veteran, let me thank you for everything that you've done to help veterans. I mean, to me, that's, obviously, they're near and dear to my heart, and I believe that they need every penny that we can give. So what is it that you're here asking from the council as far as help?
We are asking for two things. One, help us create awareness within this, within this community that there are veterans that need help and that you can help us find them. We have a, we have two programs that really fit this, well, three programs, or sorry, strategies. If you know a veteran that is homeless or maybe homeless, we have a facility that's in Winchester that can help them get back into housing. If you know a veteran who has, who is at risk of becoming homeless for whatever reason, we have veteran navigators, case managers, a veteran outreach team that will mobilize quickly and help them stabilize their housing, connect them to their community and to their, to their resources. We have a crisis and disaster response team. We would love to think that if there's a fire or some kind of disaster experienced by a veteran in this, in this area, that The Journey Home in Winchester, we would be the first person, the first organization aside from Red Cross and so forth that you would call. We have resources and relationships, community partners, federal, state, and local resources that would, that will help them quickly get back on their feet. Now we're asking for, we're also asking for, for funds. A dollar amount, well, I'll tell you what, I'll take whatever you can get, whatever we can get. Union City, Indiana gave us 20,000 this year. Others have given us 5,000, 2,500. I'm begging, without any problem doing so, so I'll take whatever I can, I can, I can get. And Congressman Ingram, thank you for your service, and all the veterans here as well.
Councilwoman Solomon?
First of all, I enjoyed meeting with you, and I learned a lot. Thank you, and thank you for being here. I'm glad we have our police force here and the fire department representative here and the chief too, so I'm glad they're hearing what you're saying. Is there a website where we and the community members who are watching who'd like to donate that can go to and make a donation?
Yes.
Could you share that with us?
Our website is www.journeyhomevets.org. You'll learn a lot about, on the website, you'll learn a lot about not only our organization but the veteran homeless crisis that is facing this nation, and there'll be resources, opportunities there to, to donate online. You can do it recurring, you can do it one time, you can also mail those, any kind of checks or money orders to the facility in Winchester, and the address is there.
Anything else from the council? Very good. Mr. Solomon, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here this evening and appreciate all the work you've done. Do you have something for us?
Just, yeah, just to pass out here.
Perfect. You just bring it to me, and I can pass it in both directions. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. First, is there anything from the council and other business beyond that? Okay, Jeanetta Pressley.
Good evening. Sit. Go.
Remind me his name.
Bernard.
Bernard. I knew it was an obvious name. I just couldn't remember exactly what it was. Thank you.
It wasn't Dog.
I thought it might be Dog.
Dog, yeah. Well, hello. My name's Jeanetta Pressley, and I live here in Muncie, Indiana. So I have taken on a project here in Muncie for the homeless people. So I've opened up a new center here in town. It's been open since the 11th of July. It's all on the seat of my pants. So the church, Garden of Gethsemane, donated the building to me and the utilities for a year to see how it runs. It's the Robert Hunt Warming Center is what it was called, but we're going to call it the Robert Hunt Warming and Cooling Center. So I'm not going to change the name. I used to work for Robert Hunt. We opened that years ago before he passed away. So it's going to be open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1:00 to 5:00 o'clock so people can get in and get cool, and I'm serving a meal. So I had a donation from the Mission of some chicken and some stuff, so it's all on donations. It's all on me. I have one grant for $5,000 is all I've been able to obtain right now. So, but we'll just see how it goes. Hoping to be opened at nighttime. That's my goal. We had a lot of problems last winter with people getting in, being safe at night, so that's the reason I took it on, is I want to see people be able to come in. There won't be no beds or anything. It'll just be table chairs, soup, something hot to drink, someplace to get warm. They can 10:00 o'clock at night to 5:00 in the morning if it works out, so I have some flyers to leave you.
Perfect.
So, and I'll, you know, anybody got any donations, I appreciate it. We'll take whatever we can get at this point.
Thank you so much for taking that on.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back.
Thank you, Ms. Pressley. Thank you, Bernard.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Overby and I want to know where the barrel of liquor is for the dog.
No liquor. I'm Christian. He's a Christian. We don't drink.
That bourbon was life-saving stuff on the mountains. It's supposed to be hot chocolate, guys. Come on. Thank you. Rick Yenser?
Thank you.
Thank you for leading us in the pledge this evening.
Well, thank you. I do believe in America. Lived here all my life. Rick Yenser, former newsman and author. I guess the thunder was taken by veterans and the homeless because that's what I came here to talk about. We just got a review of some of the money that was spent in the American Rescue Fund last year. While it helped some, it seemed to help government more. I was bothered last week when I heard that the Board of Works handed over your infrastructure money to the Sanitary District. I don't know whether you knew that or that was part of the plan last year because I don't remember, but I wondered why 7 million in infrastructure could be used for streets when the Sanitary District has its own taxes, its own utility, it's got its own money, and it's part of, I guess, just the government bailouts you've used this fund for. Because I added the numbers, I think we said something last year about this, that the budget shortfalls add up to like 6.5 million dollars, and as I recall, somebody told me last month that you borrowed money again. So if you're bailing out on one hand and you're borrowing on another, how's that going to help taxpayers? We're still paying higher taxes, and we continue to pay higher taxes, while this money that was supposed to be spent for the people, whether it's the homeless, veterans, or others, because there's hundreds, maybe thousands of those people. I work with a church pantry. I work with a recovery program, and I know the numbers that we have seen lately just keep growing. So again, I know this is old news here because you've already appropriated the money, but I hope you find out why the Sanitary District needed 7,000 in infrastructure money, because that was news to me. And as you well know, there hadn't been a whole lot spent for this substance abuse and behavior health programs too, even though the county is slow to start re- Even though the county is slow to start rehabbing incarcerated people, they haven't come forward yet with a lot of help or a lot of money. And I, you know, I'll say it over and over, people don't seem to listen, especially the government. But this money's for the people. It's not for you. It's not for government bailouts. It's not for other governments. It's to help veterans, the homeless and others out there in this community. So I, I hope you find out what happened to the money because I know somebody allotted it someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yenser. Mary Stilts. Good evening, Mary.
I had wanted to address the Journey Home too, Rose. I, I really appreciate you bringing that up. I appreciate him even more for coming up here. I've been over to the Journey Home. And it is an amazing facility. They have computers set up. They have internet set up. These veterans can get an education. They get rehabbed. They get counseling. They get drug addiction awareness. And, you know, they, they just do so much. I would love to see Muncie, the whole city, do some kind of a fundraiser to help that Journey Home. Because like he said, they help our veterans here too that are homeless. If we can get more of our veterans off the street and into rehab and get them back into productive citizens, think of what Muncie could be like. So that was the reason I had got up behind him because I wanted to address that real quick. If you ever want to check it out, I'm sure he'll open the doors and every one of you can go over to Winchester and look at that. When they first opened, how long ago has it been? Five years?
2014.
Okay. I went over there for a fundraiser and it was a blowout. I mean, it was just, it was at the Moose Lodge or one of those?
I wasn't there then.
Okay. It was, it was like at the Moose Lodge or something and they just had a major blowout to raise money to help provide all the services for the Journey Home. So please, let's get together and work on this and maybe we can do some kind of a fundraiser to help our veterans. The other thing, let's go back to Comcast, Channel 60. Roger Overby can tell you, we had a running menu on that cable Comcast channel all the time. We need a Comcast representative to come in. We really do. Because it used to have a running schedule where it showed like the event coming up next week. The, the summer heat, Fire Up the City. That would have been on there. All of this other, all of these meetings were running non-stop, 24/7. I've got a man that lives across the street from me. He has basic cable. He doesn't have internet. He doesn't have a cellphone. He wants to see what's going on in the meetings and guess what? He can't see any of these meetings. It's not fair. Him and his brother both, they live right around the corner, right across from me and right around the corner from me. We've got too many older people that do not access internet. We need Comcast. We need Channel 60 back up. So I think we need to get a Comcast representative in here. And let's find out what we can do to get that channel back up, get all of our meetings televised on there again and get advertisements showing what's going on in Muncie so that these people can jump out on a Sunday afternoon and come out and see an activity that they didn't know was happening. So let's, let's work on it. Let's get Comcast reps in here and find out why we don't have this going anymore. Please?
Thank you, Mary.
Is the problem Comcast?
I don't know that. I don't know the answer.
I really don't know. I've had people ask me the same thing. Elderly person down the street just the other day asked me the same thing and I don't know. They said, "Council meeting showed up and then it went dark."
I just want to speak to that if I could, Mark Slescher. All the meetings that the council has, the Parks Department, all the major meetings are uploaded to Channel 60. The only interruptions that I know that we've had are two since this administration took over. The most recent one was because of a situation with the cable line was cut by Comcast. So Adam and IT worked hand in hand with them to get that fixed because it was way above what I understood with the internet and all that. The thing that you were talking about earlier about the updates and stuff was the subscription service that we had that ran out. And there was no money to appropriate, to pay for that anymore. So all the meetings, with the exception of small committee meetings that we do stream once in a while, are posted to the Comcast channel. So I don't know what meetings aren't showing up. If they are going dark, then it's an issue with Comcast. Especially if it's happening in the middle of the meeting because we upload them, like city council will be uploaded the next day. Board of Works, Sanitary District are uploaded the day of the meeting and the shorter meetings. And sometimes even council meetings are uploaded that night. So it's a problem. Mr. Overby's not with me. So thank you.
Hi, Mr. Slescher, while you're there, are you saying all these meetings are being uploaded now?
All the meetings except for the smaller committee meetings, like we had a redistricting meeting, that's not. But all the, the city council, sanitary district, board of works, Parks Department, all the major meetings.
Reason I ask is there for a while, there was the slides that normally show up.
Right.
And they're not showing up and.
Which slides?
Oh, you know, the, some of them I put on 10 years ago, like the report in potholes. You know, the slideshow that plays on that.
There are slides that play in between the show.
Yeah. Well, right now, and I don't know if you've looked, but June, Mr. Deishman called me and said there's color bars on there. And there wasn't no shows or slides.
I'll check it.
And then this, this month, there, it's black. And once in a while, a city council show will come up.
When you say it's black, you're saying it's not working at all?
It's not on at all.
Well, I'll have to check with Comcast then because that's not on our side. We just upload them here. If there's an interruption in the broadcast, it's on the Comcast side of things. It's not with me. And I do know the slides you're talking about, but some of those rotating information ones were from a subscription service that I think the city obtained when you used to do that work and they don't have that anymore.
And then some of them are just things that was put on. There was, after COVID started, the city, I guess, I think, put on a bunch of COVID slides and there was information.
And we always solicit and, I mean, we've emailed churches. We've called them. I know we used to have a lot of churches on there. And I followed up with them. Like, I can't make them do it. A lot of churches now, because of COVID, I think, are streaming, even the smaller ones. So I don't think it's of importance to them. So one thing we're working on, IT, is that besides Facebook, they would stream live on the city's webpage too, via hosting on YouTube where the player would be embedded into the city's website for people that don't have Facebook. You know, because there's a lot of people, even though they have internet, don't have Facebook. So I, I just want to say the problem's not with the person that's doing the work.
Gentlemen, I would like to move on and respect the, the next speakers who have signed up this evening. I appreciate it. Is it Sheila Albertson? Okay.
I'm Sheila Albertson. Sorry, I'm under dress. I just kept finished with supper. I didn't think I was going to be able to make up, but I got done.
Thank you for coming.
I am new at this, so bear with me. I don't know if this is the place to talk about this, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. On East Memorial, I live close to the Walgreens and the CVS on Memorial in Madison. Because of the gas prices, there's more and more bikers that are using Memorial. I think we need a bike lane because the bikers are riding on the sidewalk. And that's not good because we have a lot of handicap people that go to Walgreens and CVS to get their medications, which is another issue. On the sidewalks, a lot of them are riding in the street, you know, their scooters or whatnot. Because there's no ramp on the sidewalks to go across the street. Like Elm and Memorial, if you go on the south side of there, there's still a curb. There's no ramp for them to, you know, take their vehicle off the sidewalk and back up on the sidewalk. And the people on Memorial, they're crazy. I've been hit, almost hit, I don't know how many times. They don't care. The speed is ridiculous. There's no crosswalks for the kids. I mean, it's a very dangerous area for people. But my, and then we also have a drainage problem. I mean, when the big flood was, I mean, but even when the big flood wasn't, all of that water comes downhill our way. And I think drainage, drainage issues need to be addressed. We had to go out and move our cars around to the back of our house, which we don't like to do. We have a privacy fence up. We don't like to park back there because when we do, people like to go underneath our cars since they can't get to our gas. And they like to slice our brake, our gas lines to get the gas. So we cannot park behind our home. We have to park on Elm Street. The south side does, honestly, the north, north side and downtown get the most attention. But I'm a firm believer, if good people don't move in to a neighborhood, you're not going to get a good neighborhood. Across the street, the lawns always look nice. It's great. I have a guy, I've been disabled since 2012. He comes and does our lawn. But this house on this side and this house on that side, I want my side to look like across the street. But a couple of years ago, I got ahold of a guy because I have a lumbar condition. Sometimes my back just, I only have so much walking time. And sometimes I don't even have that. So my husband bought me an electric wheelchair. Well, I wouldn't be able to use the front of my house because there's a hill. But I could go out the back and I called some guy and talked to him about grading and, you know, redoing the alley behind my house. And he said, you know, he was very helpful talking to me and everything, said they were waiting on a part for a grader, but the part was coming from Italy. So I call again and now I'm on, he's not there anymore. Now I'm on a waiting list. So, you know, I have to go out to my car. Family Dollar's not very far. I could ride my wheelchair over there. But no, I have to go get in my car and go to Family Dollar. I have to, I could go to Walgreens because they got a bench out there. I could make it there. But to come back home, I have to sit for a little bit. So, but it's, you know, there's a lot of elderly people that have to go. And even, even the ones that don't have the handicap vehicles, the walking is hard if you can hardly walk and you don't have the ramp to go down. So, and definitely the drainage, you know, if we went and moved our cars, they would have probably floated away. And I'll get to another meaning for all the houses I think need to be dealt with. But that's my main concern is I sit on my front porch. And I know the police department probably doesn't like me calling because if something's going on, I make a call. I sit out in my backyard.
Yeah, he's back. The deputy chief Degan is shaking his head. Yes, he loves that. Keep calling.
I actually was sitting on my front porch the other night and the, there was this guy that walked by. And there was a guy behind him with a sack, which I think he's at Muncie Mission and this guy could have been. But I couldn't remember where I recognized him. Well, he walked down a little bit and I'm like, oh my God. He looks just like the composite from the Delphi murders. On the composite, he had the same hat. It was a gray hat. He had the same hair. And so I called, I called the police. I don't know what came of it, but I told them which way he was walking. I hope they check that out. I don't know the name of the hat.
Kangoo hat?
You know, it's, it's just like, it's just a, and then it has a, but, I mean, he looked identical.
Yeah.
But I'm like, where do I know him from? Where do I know? And then it dawned on me.
Could you share your crossword again? What, what street do you live on?
Main, or, excuse me, 12th and Madison.
12th and Madison?
No, 12th and Elm.
12th and Elm, close. I'm, I'm in the middle.
Yeah, it's Memorial and Elm, right?
But the drainage is terrible. It's terrible on Jefferson too. I don't know, as far as the people, they're speeding because there are children. There's no crosswalks for the children to use. I don't know. I mean, there's a stoplight on Walnut and Memorial, a stoplight on Madison and Memorial. I don't know if we put a four-way stop on Jefferson and Memorial, if that would help.
Yeah. Well, Ms. Albertson, we do appreciate you coming in and alerting us of this. You know, Councilman Clark took down your, your address and my guess would be looking into that. It'd be great to have a number of contact info and then I'll work with your councilman.
Um, I'll give it to you right now.
Well, you can just write it down, share. That'd be great.
Okay. Because I'm not, my, I'm not one of those people that worry about backlash. That's what I have health insurance for. You know what I mean?
Thank you, Ms. Albertson. Thank you very much.
But I would like to get these things done for the handicapped and for being behind my house.
Completely understood. Thank you. Mr. Barber.
Audi Barber again. I got one more praise before I start my rant.
Is it for us?
Maybe. The praise is, we did get the sidewalk cleared out at the end of Memorial, West Memorial. It looks wonderful. You can actually see the sidewalk from the road now. Thank you to whoever done it. If it was the mayor, thank you, mayor, whoever got it done. It looks good. Mr. Garrett did an awesome job on that. Next, I'd like to see the city council make up some kind of ordinance that none of our baseball diamonds or namesakes for the city of Muncie be changed without the permission of the city council. I think there was enough backlash over the ball diamond that there's a lot of angry citizens in Muncie over the ball diamond in McCullough Park. I'd like to see some kind of ordinance made on that. So this person here can't give a million dollars and get the name of the ball diamond changed to Gainbridge. So that is a big problem. I don't know if you guys followed it on Facebook. But it is a very big issue and a lot of people were upset. A lot of family members were upset because not all of them were just notified of the change. But since, you know, since it's being done, I'd like to see you guys pass an ordinance on that to where it cannot be done unless it's brought to the city council first. I mean, let's be transparent about it. Let's not just take the million dollars, redo the ball diamonds and then post something on the city's website that says, "Oh, we're going to change this to Gainbridge Ball Field. Come on out and, and join us." Another thing, I've also heard that the BK Root Beer Stand is possibly owned by the city now or possibly going to be demolished and, and some kind of office or something put in there. My parents owned that for about four years. I ran it for them for about four years. And it's, it's hard to make money in that place, but that place has been there since 1954, 55. I got a picture of it when it was brand new. Beautiful place, still is a beautiful place. Wish somebody could get in there and make a go of it. But I don't really necessarily know that it needs to be destroyed for a medical building or something. I don't know. But anyhow, if it's, if any of you guys have heard about it being destroyed, tore down or anything, you know, let's try to stop this before it does get tore down because once that's gone, it's gone. once that's gone, it's gone forever. Everybody up there has been to that place. 90% of the kids that grew up in this town has either been there, worked there, worked car hop, whatever. It's iconic place here in Muncie and I'd like to see it remain. Hopefully, we can get somebody in there to make a go of it because it's tough. It really is. So, but other than that, thanks for the good short meeting and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Seth Rollings.
Birthday boy.
Did you, are you just here for us to sing you happy birthday?
That's what it is. No, that's not what it is.
We won't do, we won't do that.
This is how I want to spend my 21st birthday.
Your 21st birthday?
Yes.
Is it really your 21st birthday?
I turned 21 today, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Happy birthday. We hitting the chug tonight?
Are you buying?
This makes me feel really old.
You might be an alum.
He used to be a student of mine. That's all.
Sorry, Seth, we're done teasing you. Go ahead.
You're all good. I was just, I was trying to talk because this is something I haven't seen addressed here, but I've seen it. There's been some talk along, like there's been Facebook groups made about it and stuff that I really think would be kind of smart to take attention to. I don't know, I don't know there's any necessarily too many like concrete facts about any wrongdoings or illegal things going on, but BSU Rentals and Middletown Property Group, probably our biggest landlord in the whole city. The city, the city also does a lot of work with them in terms of Southway Center and other projects that they've really partnered to work with. Some of my, there's been a lot of complaints. There's even been a Facebook group made about this where a bunch of people are now talking about how they don't, they don't follow lease agreements, they don't do a lot of things, they don't have, they don't give up maintenance that is really timely enough. And I know the state statutes on a lot of this stuff is really hard for the city to kind of tamp down on this. And it sucks, it sucks to be Muncie because every August, we had influx of about 15, 20,000 new people coming to the city. And every August, about 6, 9,000 are going to be off-campus runners. And they make up a big majority of like our economic growth and beauty. And like, it would be terrible if like for we lose students who don't, who they rent with Middletown Property Groups who apparently just took over BSU Campus Rentals, number two off-campus company. And the more and more of this becomes monopolized, the more and more like stuff like this occurs. So I think just be smart, kind of just keep taking a look whenever we see complaints because it's a big issue. It's not just campus renters, they own a lot of property on the south side of town and it's just something, this is something I, if there's only one owner of these properties when people rent, it's a big issue because they don't have any competition with anybody and they can do whatever they want and treat people how they want to. So it's kind of smart if we can tamp down with whatever we can with the laws if there's any wrongdoing.
Mr. Rollings, we have a minimal housing code. Anytime you have housing complaints, you can call the building commissioner's office. You can do an unsafe walk-through. You can give them your address. They'll walk through and make sure that everything in those rental properties is up to our minimal housing code. A lot of times, they take the fire inspectors with them. They walk through and make sure they have their smoke detectors where they need to be, their electricity boxes are where they should. Everything is up to our minimal housing code. If you call the building commissioner's office, we have, what, five building inspectors that will go do unsafe walk-throughs. They write those up and they have 30 days to fix those from the date of the walk-through. And if they don't, then that goes into our unsafe housing. Then they have a court once a month that they have to fix those or they're fined. So a lot of people don't know that we do have that minimal housing code, but you have to call to get an unsafe walk-through and those will get fixed. That's what our building commissioner's office is for. They will make sure that those get fixed.
Sounds great. And the other thing I was going to talk about was last month, the official 988, 988 code went online. 988, if you guys don't know, is the new suicide prevention hotline. It's something near and near to me. My mother passed away of suicide about nine years back and the 988, I think, has a lot of potential. Right now, they use 988 as kind of a hotline for people in distress situations where they can call and you have a counselor over the phone. It's kind of just, just like, stuff like that where nobody's actually constituent person. In other cities, though, they've already started to use this type of, this type of situation to make it like where they have more in-person visits via 988 calls. The city of Denver actually has basically used, set up a scenario where if you called 988 instead of 911, they send you out a police car with an officer and a mental health professional. The mental health professional will go to the door and like if, if the officer isn't needed, the officer won't, the officer will head off. Like they don't, they're not necessary in a lot of situations, especially where someone's having a mental breakdown. It's not necessarily violent and we don't need an officer with a gun in the area. But the officer, the officer probably doesn't want that either. They don't want to be responding to all of these mental, mental health breakdowns and all these situations. So this is kind of just used for the city of Muncie over time to maybe start adopting some of these policies. We may not have like the funds to send out mental health professionals all over the place, but over time, kind of use what we have and see if we can kind of adopt this. Because we do have a lot of mental health issues in the community and a lot of times it overlaps with drug addiction. And so as we kind of move forward, there's been more emphasis, there's state grants, you know, some of the ready money, the next round of ready money, the governor's talked about giving money to 988. So with some of this, like just kind of see what we can do as a city to kind of adopt best practices in a way that's not necessarily going to break the bank.
Thank you, Mr. Rollings.
Thank you. This is a lot about you that you're hearing, 21st birthday. Thank you, Mr. Rollings. We appreciate you.
Yeah, happy birthday. That is it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion was made by Councilman Polk, seconded by Councilman Ingram. All in favor? Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute.